Official meeting tonight, February the 5th, 2024 at 6:30.
Good evening, Mr. Smith.
Okay, again, we'll officially call the meeting to order. Welcome Rick Smith and the audience and the commissioners and staff. Public comments, I have a list of signed up. The last meeting I failed, I skipped over somebody. So if I have skipped over you whenever I think I've finished, raise your hand to make sure I don't miss you and give you an opportunity. When your name is called, if you will come to the podium to my right, speak into the microphone, face the commissioners, and have your three minutes of conversation with, yes ma'am?
Commissioner Smith's call dropped, I need to answer.
That's what that boo 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 is. Bless you.
Hey, Ms. Christie, thank you.
All right, try to stay with us, Mr. Smith.
Bless you.
Yes, I am, thank you, Mayor.
All right, Lisa Ragland, please.
Hey, good evening. I'm Lisa Ragland at 115 Salisbury Street, and I want to start by saying that the three new commissioners have personally stated that they've not ever served in public office before. That's not a detriment, that's just a statement. But I do feel that calling this special meeting was premature, and to consider changes to the rules and procedures to adopt the proposed meeting calendar, to suggest that the board have an executive secretary, and to approve the use of an agenda topic cover sheet, or potentially reverse a decision in regards to Block Q made by the prior Board of Commissioners should be considered negligent until you've completed your required training on January 18th and 19th. So I request that all matters be pushed to a later meeting date to give you time to get through the training, and for the public to have more knowledge and be more prepared in reviewing the proposed changes in deeper depth. I also want to talk about Items 3 and 6 specifically. So I reviewed the town's initial charter, which for those of y'all that don't know, it was originally filed February 14th of 1969. There have only been two changes filed as amendments to that charter in 54 years. And one of those was to change the government from mayor council to council manager. Pursuant to this charter, the mayor has the right to vote, and the only way that can be amended is through amending the charter. Having that included in the rules and of procedure would be contrary to the charter. So I request if you are going to proceed with voting on Article or Agenda Item 3, you consider that charter in its full scope. The Item 6 is in regards to all of the proposed meetings. I counted 32 budget meetings over the next six months, which I feel is overkill, on not just the town's staff, who also have jobs to do and should be in their offices taking care of the public versus being in special meetings every day. But I also think if we want to be transparent, and we want the community to be involved in those decision-making processes, that we not have those at 10 o'clock on weekdays when a lot of the residents and folks that own property that can't attend on a weekday due to their work schedule can come either in the evenings, which obviously we don't want the town to be here at night 32 nights. So I'm proposing that we have no more than two budget meetings per month. That I think would consolidate the department head meetings maybe into one. That eliminates five in February, that eliminates five in March. But I do think that the budget meetings is overkill. So there's my comments on those few items.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ragland. Mr. McInturf, if you cannot hear in the audience, if you'll raise your hand, we'll try and make some adjustments to make sure you can hear. So just raise your hand if you have a problem hearing.
Good evening. My name's Rick McInturf. I'm a full-time resident of 122 Friggit. My comments relate to Agenda Item Number 3, Rules and Procedures. When the Agenda and Proposed Rules document could be viewed, it was evident that this was a very large document. Since no crosswalk to the old document was provided, it took a very long time to compare the two documents and identify the proposed revisions. Concerns have been noted in several areas, but the three that I would like to call to light tonight include the extensive duties of the proposed executive secretary, the revisions in some of the duties and responsibilities of the mayor, and the reduction in responsibilities of the town clerk. My request would be to either postpone action on this item or require a second reading prior to full implementation to allow ample time for the public to review and comment. Such a delay would accomplish three things. Ample time would be allowed to thoroughly review the new procedures and ensure compliance with UNC suggested rules of procedures for Boards of Commissioners. A delay would allow our newly-elected commissioners to attend and complete their required training, which is scheduled for January 18th and 19th. Finally, a delay would also allow ample time for our local attorney to review the rules and assure the public that they were all in compliance with state and local requirements. I would also recommend that prior to the final vote, and in the interest of full transparency, a single document be created with the changes from the existing document highlighted in bold, so the general public could easily reference the proposed changes. The request is simple, either delay final action on the new rules and procedures or require a second reading in February prior to final implementation. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Pate?
I don't sound like myself tonight. Sylvia Pate, live at 111 Charlotte Street. Mayor and Commissioners, I did submit comments earlier today, and in my rush to get those in by noon, I left out a couple of things that I did want to mention. I agree with everything that Mr. McInturf just said, so I won't belabor that, but you know, the fact of the matter is, these proposed rules of procedure weren't even on the website for the town until Wednesday of this week. You know, the average person is not quite as industrious as some of us that are going to take these two 20-page documents and compare them, though some of us did, obviously. But I would agree with him, before you take any action, I think there does need to be a document that's annotated that reflects the proposed changes so that the average person in our town can look at that and figure out what the proposed changes are. But it does appear to me that there's a number of changes in the document that's trying to usurp the role and responsibilities of the mayor, and I think that the charter clearly states that the mayor does have the opportunity to vote in instances where there is a tie. And there's a number of instances in the proposed rules where that's indicated that the mayor shall have no vote, even in instances of a tie. And the other, there was another section here I thought was really important, under appointments of vacancies to the board and to other committees that you might have. The mayor has been able to make nominations in the past for that, and even to vote on that in the event of a rule, but in the new rules, it says that the mayor cannot make nominations, vote on appointments under this rule, even in the event of a tie, and can't even participate in the discussions or deliberations of appointments. And I think that's ridiculous. The other thing I wanted to mention was that the adding of the executive secretary, I did fail to remember that there used to be an executive secretary, and actually, it was changed in 2020. And at that time, Pat Zielkowski was the executive secretary, and she was actually the one that requested it to be eliminated. And that tells me everything I need to know about that position if that was her request, if you knew her. But it didn't work then, and I don't think we need to add that back. It just is adding to me a totally unnecessary layer that we don't need. It makes it more difficult to get items on the agenda, and I just don't think we need to add that. And I feel like if the commissioners want, a commissioner wants to add an item on the agenda, it says they have to have their request seconded by another commissioner or town manager. I think if a commissioner wants an item on the agenda and they provide the appropriate documentation, they have a right to have that item put on the agenda. And in Rule Number 5, under the reasons why you can go into an executive session, you left out one rule, one that was in there before. It was the one about discussing matters that were related to the location or expansion of a business or industry. Perhaps you don't think that might ever happen in the town of Holden Beach, but it's possible that it could. I know from working in economic development, lots of towns and counties work with businesses in that capacity. And also, I do want to just mention real quickly, under that same section, you say when you go into executive session to discuss the purchase of real estate, that you must denote the current owner of the property, the location, and the use of the property that you intend to use it for. I think you should change that from must to may, because it would be sometimes in your benefit not to disclose that information.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Pierce?
Is that Pierce?
John Pierce, yes, sir.
John Pierce, John Pierce, 123 Burlington, full-time resident. So these are the two documents. I agree with the comments made by previous speakers. Here are the two documents. If you've not seen these before, you have, obviously. It's a lot to compare, so I'm going to go right to the, I go back to the heart of, we really need whatever changes are made, and there were some that I liked, by the way. I'll say that upfront. There were a couple of things I thought made sense. But we need to go back and have the town, for transparency reasons, et cetera, really have more time to look at these, and I heard some good ways to do that. We need more time. I'm going to use three points to explain why. There's a lot of burden put on commissioners going forward to participate in the process. And when you put burdens on commissioners, it makes it difficult. And you got to go through the documents to pull those out, but when you pull those out, you start to see that it really does make it difficult on some commissioners. And you got to remember, and I know you do, that the commissioners are representing not just part of the town, not just this group, but the whole town. And when you hurt transparency and participation, when you do make your heart on the participation by the board. The close session change, it was just noted, I didn't know that anyone else would pick up on that, but I've done a lot of business in my life, done a lot of deals, as you have. And there are times when the parties want to explore opportunities as to what makes sense from a business perspective, and to throw the name of the seller and the usage and all that information out to the public too early, not that it shouldn't come out before sign on it, it needs to, but to throw it out there early is just not a best practice in negotiating. And you all know that, I'm sure. The third item, and I'll close with this, this document limits the influence, if you will, of the mayoral position. Now, we have a unique, and I won't call out names here, I don't need to, we have a unique position here with our mayor. But it's not just that position, probably, it in fact packs others. But when you play with the influence of a mayor, especially in this case, you impact the influence they may have for, at the state and the federal level. And everyone here knows how influential sometimes that position has been in terms of grants and better treatment for all the community, all the property owners, which we're always talking about, benefit from having a strong mayoral position that can participate in these meetings. So I would say that we really need to step back on that and rethink it. And that really is my final point. Some points are probably good in this document, but we need more time, ladies and gentlemen, to look these things over and comment on them tonight and document the suggested changes, but more time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Mr. Kelly?
I'm Mike Kelly from 105 Burlington, we're full-time residents. And I just, going through all that again, I would like to ask too that you postpone the voting on this document. There's no way that we could possibly go through all that in 48 hours, or less than 48 hours. Does that sound to you, just hold up? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Keith Smith?
Good evening, everyone. Keith Smith, 105 Durham Street. I was kind of surprised, this was a special meeting, and best I understood, we were going to talk about the rules and regulations. So imagine my surprise, and happily, I might add, for Item Number 7, Block Q, which you might, why would Keith be so happy about that? Because that's nowhere in Keith's domain. But oddly enough, over the last probably six to eight weeks, I've been having conversations with people in the town, and through that, we've formed a, what we call the Holden Beach Community Alliance. And the purpose of that is to promote and preserve the history and heritage of Holden Beach community. And one of the spots that we looked at, one of the tasks that we've kind of assigned ourselves, is to create a museum, a place to house the history and heritage of Holden Beach. And so, one of the things, or one of the places that was kind of proposed through that, to place a museum, a walking trail, a walking history, something of that nature, was Block Q, because there was some space there. So imagine my surprise when I saw it come up on the docket tonight, I'm like, holy moly, I get to speak to that tonight. I'm like, you know, who'd have thunk that? I mean, I know y'all think, only thing I think is pier, but you know, there's other parts up here that work. So as you consider the action on Block Q, in your reconsideration, I know we're talking about paving tonight in pervious areas, or it's pervious, and what type of asphalt and all that kind of stuff, but since it's going to, it looks like it may go back to the drawing board anyway, I would like to somehow start the process of how can we put a structure on there to pay homage of those that went before us, and anything that the Holden Beach Community Alliance can do to work with you to get that done. I mean, we're primarily 501(c)(3), raising money for those type of projects, and so if there's anything we can do to assist in that, we look forward, as a group, to work with the new commissioners and the existing, and Mr. Telephone Rick over there, to make that happen. Because there's a lot, there's a lot to be said. My history goes back 2020. So if you're going to look to me to what happened in 1954 at the Swing Bridge when it was put up, I only know that because I talked to a Robinson. I only know certain other things, you know, anecdote that the mayor put about riding the grader down through the town. I mean, you know, who puts a teenage kid on a motor grader? You know, we definitely wouldn't do that now. But I mean, those are, those are things that only people that were here during those time periods can relate to those. I sat with a lady earlier this evening, and she told me about having a conversation with Mr. Lee Petty at the end of the pier. You know, that's a piece of history here, which is kind of funny, because that's another thing, but I have a connection with the Petty family, and so we're trying to work something.
That's time.
Okay. So anyway, Block Q, if you're going to reconsider that, how about let's carve a spot and put a museum on there? Thank you.
Thank you. Dana Martin?
Regina Martin, 1032 Ocean Boulevard West, Holden Beach. I'd like to thank the commissioners and the mayor for their service. I would also like to request that the new Board of Commissioners consider waiting to adopt their proposal, much like some of the speakers before me, until they have attended their training in Wellington for newly-elected commissioners. Having been a newly-elected commissioner at one point, I found that training exceedingly helpful, and I believe you all will find that to be so, and you also find that some of the things that you thought you knew, you maybe didn't. So I encourage you to hold off on adopting the rules. If you're unwilling to delay the voting for the proposed rules or procedures for 2024, then I suggest and/or request that you go through the proposed rules or procedures and explain how they differ from the past rules, since we were not presented with a copy of the past rules. In the past, if we're changing an ordinance, we were always given a highlighted copy showing what the changes were. There are some market changes here, there are some wording changes that if you don't look really closely, you miss the wording, and it changes the entire context of the Specifically, I'm concerned with the executive secretary position, and I know we tried that once before, and I know that that did not go as smoothly as everyone initially had thought. So a number of us are wondering if it wouldn't be much better to wait until you have gone through your training to vote on this and maybe remove it and put it back on the agenda for the next meeting. And lastly, one of my bigger concerns is the budget, number of budget meetings. I realize making the budget is exceedingly important, but a lot of us citizens, me included, I can't take two times a week off at 10 o'clock in the morning to attend a meeting. Not that I don't feel that it's important, but I do have a business to run. And a lot of people here now are permanent residents that actually live here and work here. They're not just retired folks that are here and have plenty of free time. So I would like for you to reconsider that schedule, and maybe, if nothing else, move a few of those meetings to a later time, maybe one at 10, and the next meeting, whatever, have it at 5 o'clock or whatever. But I do believe if you want transparency, you have got to show us that that is truly what you mean, that you're not just trying to slide stuff in front of us and let us accept.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Ryan Williams?
My name is Ryan Williams. I'm a local charter boat captain, and I would like to discuss some topics on Block Q. A lot of people have some ideas, I guess I should say, of what to do with it now. That's not the intention when it started. When it started, it was fault with the intention to use as boat ramp parking. Now, it seems things have changed. It seems people are upset about the concrete, they're upset about the green space, not green space, what can and can't be done, and this and that. That was the intention when they bought it. Now, right now with the state, I've been on the phone with the wildlife all day, we ranked last in the state, I'm not talking about by a little bit, I'm talking about a landslide, fastest-growing county in the state, fifth in the nation, and there's 11 spots to park a boat, and you're fixing to cut it off. You're going to cut off multiple people as far as lose their income, like, I mean, there's nowhere to park. And the idea that the rest of this, as far as boat ramp parking, I can tell you, what you're going to do is, you're going to collect money from people with the intention to the tune of 2022, $455,000, 2023, $682,000. How much of that was boat ramp parking for that intention? It'd be no different if you charged out there and turned right around for the access to beach, but didn't use the funds accordingly. The state's going to take the cheapest option, then there's going to be something happen. The state pretty much has a mutual agreement, and they allow the town to do this. They have the authority to pull eminent domain, and they'll pave it from one end to the other and put 80 spots out there, and you will have a festing. They're going to take the cheapest route. It's a win-win all the way around. But the fact that there seems to be some issues brought up with it, and that the fact that you have talked about what to do with it, leaves the general public to believe that you're not going to have any boat ramp parking, and you've collected money for two years from them, for that sole purpose. I suppose you would donate that money back. So I really think that as far as that goes, to save face for the general public, the town, you know, the new board needs to commit and say, that's what some of it's going to be. Because if not, you're going to have hordes of people calling the state. There's 300,000 registered votes in North Carolina, and we ranked dead last by landslide in the need for a boat ramp and parking. And the cheapest option is not some other piece of land somewhere else. The cheapest option is for them to pull eminent domain on Block Q. That's pretty clear. And now you're going to piss off a whole horde of people by taking their money and not doing that. So it seems to be that you need to at least show some face and tell the general public that you still intend to do that before you collect money in 2024. It's a lot to say.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Have I missed anybody? Okay, very good. Item Number 3 on the agenda was brought to us by Commissioners Thomas and Parfus. Floor is yours.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to accept the rules of procedure as is.
Second.
As a person that makes the motion gets the first. Do y'all have a discussion?
Yes, I'd like to have a discussion.
Go ahead.
You want me to start? I'll start.
Well, the person that made the motion is supposed to be the first person to make a discussion.
So basically, we have gone through these rules of procedure, and we didn't, we feel strongly that we want to put back in the executive secretary, we feel it puts some control on the agenda.
That's Item 4.
I'm talking about the, we're on Item 3. I'm talking about the rules of procedure. That's what we changed in the rules of procedure.
Okay.
I'm just trying to-
I'd like to make a comment on Number 3.
You don't, you don't have the floor yet, sir.
Anyway, this is the way that we feel that would be the best way to move forward to run our meetings, and this is the way we want to go forward. That's fine.
All right, Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, we are seeing the team, the three, being Tom Myers, Tracy Thomas, and Rick Papras, try to change the way that we actually run our meetings at Holden Beach. And if you have heard from our, the public, from the people that live at Holden Beach, they would like for them to at least slow down and think a minute. Go to your local government commission training. Learn that you can't do the things that, like Tracy Thomas did, when she came in and told us that she was going to do everything, the team was going to do everything in their power to stop Block Q and defeat it. Again, we need to take reservations and let them at least go through the proper professional training that they need before they make the decision. However, there are three of them. I don't get to vote tonight because I'm not in town, and Dr. Paige Dyer is only one voter. And their procedure changes are going to change the way that our mayor and the way that the rest of the commission works. We need to table this decision until we can officially vet it through, number one, our town attorney, as well as the rest of the town of Holden Beach. These three represent a fraudulent Holden Beach Property Owners Association that represents very few of the 2200 people that own property at Holden Beach. So they are going to come in, as Tracy Thomas's brother did back before 2020, and change the way we operate at Holden Beach. Please, I can't be there to vote tonight, but would you please, commissioners, please try to reserve your agenda until it can be vetted in the community. Thank you.
Dr. Dyer?
Dr. Dyer, you have the floor.
Thank you. As was stated with some of the comments that was made, my concern is there was no information about what language in the procedure was changed. In order for the public to provide meaningful input in less than, it was approximately 48 hours, and for the public to have to be able to go through that much documentation without indication of what was changed, for the average layperson that's not gone through any kind of municipality training, that's going to be difficult for them to digest, and I don't know what the rush is to fix something that's not broken. There could be some changes that are made, but the public needs time to have an input. And that's why my, my point at the last meeting was, this is business that should be taken care of at a regular, regular meeting. Those meetings are advertised a year in advance, the agenda comes out usually about four to five days prior to the meeting, so it gives people a chance to read it. I don't know what the rush is. I don't know what the rush is. As far as changing the mayor's role, this is a change in the town charter. Our town attorney is not here. Is this legal? Our attorney's not even present, because this is a special meeting. Evidently, he couldn't be here. I'm not comfortable with changing certain things so quickly that I don't even know that's legal. I think we need to have an input from our town attorney before this is voted on and changed. As far as the executive secretary goes, I don't understand why. Our town clerk has done an excellent job getting the agenda out. She gets it out in proper time for us to review it. I don't understand why we have to have a biased person to control the agenda when we have somebody that's unbiased. You know, I'm not sure that something I want on the agenda might not be put on because somebody doesn't agree with it. I don't know. In my opinion, that hasn't happened before. We haven't had any trouble getting anything on the agenda. We have an employee that does it. She's doing a fine job. Basically, what the commissioners are saying now is, her job is not effective, she's not doing it correctly. You know, we hire staff for a reason, and we can tell them, you know, how to do their job, but to get this position, I think, is unnecessary.
Okay, I'm going to take this opportunity to speak, because I don't know whenever I get to ever speak again.
I have been very well-versed on your current rules of procedure. If you're going to participate, you have to hand over the gavel.
Sir, you are wrong.
I don't think so.
You can't engage in debate.
You are wrong.
You cannot enter the debate. It's in the procedure. These are the rules of procedure we're talking about.
Let me quote something to you. I'm not debating anything.
You are participating in the discussion. That's the wording.
So your goal, other than the three of you, to defeat me in the election, you didn't do that, so now you're going to strip me of every responsibility I have.
No, you can speak, you just need to hand over the gavel.
That's exactly right. That's the way it's been operated. That's the current rules.
Well, you're going to vote to override me anyway, so there.
Okay, you may speak. That's how it works.
You know that, you know that, Ellen.
I've been, I don't even have to talk about my qualifications, sir. I don't even, I'm not even going to discuss it with you, my experience versus yours and my training versus yours. It's fairly clear, but I'm going to go on and respect your request, because you've got the votes to make me do it. I've been doing this a long, are you going to let me speak?
Oh, I didn't, I were finished, sorry.
I never have gotten started. Is there a time limit on how long I can talk?
What do the rules and procedures say, Heather?
I would have to look. We've never put a time limit on it before.
I think there was a 10-minute time limit on discussion related to certain motions.
I believe there is something in there.
But you may talk as long as you want to talk. We've got all the time in the world.
The first thing I would do is to ask you not to be working on the paperwork while I'm talking, as you did while the speakers were talking. You weren't even paying attention to them. So if you would, listen, please. In 1969, I was a young fellow, and this town went through a lot of turmoil to become a town. A battle with people that had other ideas and concepts. Town has come a long ways. We've become organized and overall a very cohesive group, I think, and we've made major accomplishments which have been recognized by the nation and like-kind organizations as the town of Holy Beach. Our town clerk has been voted and awarded the top clerk in the state of North Carolina. I hope you heard that. And here we are slapping her in the face by saying, oh, number one clerk in the state of North Carolina, you don't know what you're doing, you don't do a good enough job, we're going to take that away from you. And a person that has never been serving in an elected capacity before, no public training, no education, and I don't mean this in a personal way, this is facts, haven't had the first training course, and you are deciding that this lady, the number one clerk in the state of North Carolina, doesn't know what she's doing. You are stripping the mayoral position. You want me to be a little dog around all over the county and the state and Washington with a little tag on my head saying I'm the mayor of Holy Beach, but I don't have any authority to do anything. A little simple thing like what you just did to me, Mr. Myers, take the gavel away. Every meeting and every board I've served on, county level, state level, and municipal level, until it is a deep, in-depth discussion, like a one-on-one, I don't have to relinquish that, but that's all right, it's not worth arguing over, because you've got the votes, you've got three, the team wants. So I'm just simply saying to you that as I look at it, for 20-some years, I can't remember, 25, 26, 27 years or whatever, I've served on this board, and you three have decided that all I've learned on the state, county, all these boards that I've served on, hospital boards, health boards, county planning boards, and on and on and on, that what I have knowledge, you don't want to hear it. You don't want me to be able to vote on something that you've never been involved in, you telling me that the three of you know more and have more knowledge and experience than I do as like-kind staff and other public officials that have served the town of Holy Beach. I don't understand why the grab of power, I knew it was coming, but I didn't know I was going to get slapped and the public was going to get slapped in a 48-hour turnaround of the way we operate the town. And as well pointed out tonight, the town does have a charter, and I have a major question whether you can just, in a matter of a few minutes, change the way the town operates by changing that charter. I've never heard a discussion, other than you have to go through the procedure and allow the public to impose their thoughts and guidance in any changes that the town have in the way they operate. And I am fully aware, just as these other nice people have spoken tonight, not one thing that they have said tonight, and not one thing I'm going to say, not one thing that Mr. Smith has said, and not one thing that Dr. Dyer said, you're not going to abide or consider anything that has been said previous tonight because you did a one, two motion, a second, and you're already ready to vote on it as you worked on your paperwork, Mr. Myers, while the speakers are speaking, you weren't even listening. I sat here and watched you work on it. That's what we're up against. Why can't we listen to the people? Why can't we take advantage of the number one clerk in the state of North Carolina? Why do we throw all this aside for a power grab? And that is exactly what it is. Friday night at 6:30, many of us had plans, but no, no, we're sitting here, how many towns and how many organizations call meetings at 6:30 on a Friday night?
That was for you and Paige, not for us. I gave you a two-week window of any time of day or night, and that was what Heather came up with.
He has the floor.
Not me.
And I told you I could appear.
As ruled, I have the floor, Mr. Smith.
The mayor has the floor.
Yes, you're correct. We did have an alternative to pick the least impactful date, and trying to accommodate you guys, the team, that was the least impactful date and the closest time that I had, so I canceled the plans that I had to allow a time for a desk to meet. I sure wish I hadn't. I could have helped these people have more time to read all this stuff. I don't know what else to say, and I can tell you, the animosity, the ill will, and the direction that this board has headed has of this evening, it's going to be a rough ride. It's going to be a rough ride. So with that, I relinquish my time, sir. You have the gavel, and I only want the gavel back if you think it's okay for me to have it back, because you're going to do whatever you want to do.
I am going to follow the rules of procedure. You have it back, you're in charge.
It's going to be a rough ride.
Do you want to speak, Rick, or should I?
I'll go ahead.
Okay, you're out of order, sir. I didn't give you the floor. This man doesn't have a gavel.
Thank you.
Now, if we want to start playing games like this, guys, I've got a little bit of experience, and I might be not, I'm not as dumb as I look. So if that's the games you want to play, we can play by the rules and still have a good time, if you want to, or we can work together and try to do what the people are asking us to do.
Yes, sir.
So now you have the floor. Representing the whole town.
For the record, I'm not on that board anymore. I stepped down, just so you know. Homeowners, homeowners association. I hear you, Will. You know, people could read that document on its face value and see what it says to you, okay? We are required to get a set of rules and procedures in place. It should have been done at the last meeting. We do want to get it in place quickly. This is how we want the board to run, how we, you know, almost every change, if not...
Please, alter the view.
Excuse me? Excuse me, I have the floor, please. Almost every change, if not all the changes that were made, have been in previous rules of procedure. You can shake your head, I understand, but we went through and we looked at them. I think that the executive secretary position is not a slight to Heather. Heather does do a great job, and we have gone over these rules of procedure with the town manager and the town clerk to make sure we were in accordance with the town ordinances. So the reason we want an executive secretary is many times there are agenda items that are vague, or you can't tell what it's about on the topic. Oftentimes, there's insufficient information in the agenda package for people to know. We've talked about Block Q, I'll just, I'm going to have to hit that later. Tonight, you've seen what the actual construction drawings for Block Q look like, and that includes a whole lot of stormwater features.
That's not included in the discussion for the motion that's on the floor.
No, this isn't, this is an example of things not being included. Am I out of bounds, Ellen? You're in charge.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
Stay on topic.
So this lack of information I've experienced, and I want to get it fixed. So I believe that if we have this executive secretary who is involved with all this, we'll make sure the information's there. The executive secretary does not have the authority to prevent the mayor, the town manager, or any commissioner from putting an agenda item on the agenda. Her primary function is to make sure that all the information is there and it's clear so the public can review it. That's it, and it hasn't been happening, so that's what we want to do. This is not a slight against Heather.
You just said it is. That's saying she's not doing her job.
People have to provide Heather the information.
She's out of order.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Yes, Mr. Myers, she is out of order, and I will correct her. Ma'am, you're out of order.
Thank you.
Back to you, Mr. Parfus.
We're trying to make sure the public gets all the information. The public doesn't always get all the information. That's up to whoever submits this stuff to give Heather the information. I don't think it's been happening. That's all I've got, Mr. Mayor.
Any other commissioner who want the floor, please?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, may I speak now?
No, sir. Mr. Myers is recognized first.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
As Rick said, the rules of procedure are based on multiple previous versions. We went through a variety of them. They all were based on the school of government template for rules of procedure, and we followed the school of government template. And like it or not, we have a weak mayor form of government. That's a fact, that's how we're organized, that's the kind of town we have. So we did spend a lot of time reviewing, correcting, adding changes. It was vetted with the town clerk. In my opinion, the significant change is the executive secretary. I also believe it was very effective when it was implemented in 2015. Prior to that, meeting packets were not distributed to the public before the meeting. So I'm sure you can picture what it would be like to be sitting there right now without even a meeting packet. There were a lot of other improvements that were made. So we're basically talking about bringing back that role as it existed and bringing back a lot of the good practices so that when something comes before the board, there's sufficient documentation available and provided to the public so the public can participate, the public can provide input, the public can follow along what we're doing. That wasn't the case until this role was put in place. So we're bringing it back. It's no different than it was for five years. I think it was very successful. As Rick said, this was supposed to be passed at the December meeting, so we've pushed it. We wanted to get it in place as soon as possible, which is why we called the special meeting so we could have it for January. We've got a lot on our plate. We're trying to knock these things off. It can be revised at any point in time. We can revise it at the next meeting. If it's not correct, if it's not legal, we will fix it, we will correct it, we will make that change. But we're trying to make progress here, we're trying to move ahead, get what should be a fundamental, straightforward thing done so that we can move on to more important things. Thank you.
Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tom Myers, you as the president of the homeowners association or property owners association, which really amounts to about less than a sixteenth of the property owners that are on Holy Beach. You're making assumptions for them.
Off topic.
That is off topic.
Number two, you're talking about the transparency and how the you three, which are the team, and you, Tom, Tracy, and Rick, the team, are trying to make sure everybody knows what's going on. But you didn't put out this agenda till Wednesday. Today's Friday, Tom. My gracious, how did anybody read 20 pages or let alone let 2,200 property owners know what you three are doing? You don't represent Holy Beach. You don't represent what you're doing. So you continue to think that you're going to be the holy grail of this, but you're not. Tom, you and Tracy and Rick are not the boys of Holy Beach. The people sitting in front of you, I wish I could be there tonight and look at them, the people that you are looking at are the people that love Holy Beach.
Try, Mr. Smith, try to stay on the topic of the agenda item.
May I really to call the question, please?
Like the what?
She wants to call the question, which she can do. All right, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
It's three to one, Madam Clerk.
Of course it is.
We all knew that was coming. All right, next item on the agenda. Commissioner Thomas and Parfus, you have the floor.
I'd like to make a motion to elect Tracy Thomas as the executive secretary.
A second. Discussion, hearing none.
I have a discussion.
All right, Dr. Dyer has a discussion.
I don't think, I've been a commissioner for two years, I never had a problem with the, getting an agenda, I never had a problem getting my information packet, I never had one of my constituents that voted for me and re-elected me say that they had an issue with getting the agenda, getting the information on the agenda, and I think our town clerk has done an excellent job. I think it's biased to have somebody with a biased opinion to run the agenda. We have someone who's unbiased, has been... We have someone who's unbiased, has been doing an excellent job, and I think we should let her, Heather, handle it. And so I don't think we need an executive secretary.
Commissioner, want to speak? Anybody?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, may I speak?
No, Mr. Myers is ahead of you.
I've already stated why I think the position is important. I think we can show the value. I think we can prove it. And if we don't like it, we can remove it at any time. But I think Tracy knows the rules better than any of us, and I think she'll do an outstanding job. And she does serve at the pleasure of the board. So if it doesn't work, it doesn't work. But I am very confident that it will work and that it'll deliver the benefits that it did last time it was in place.
Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Okay, well evidently, the team, as already, as we saw with the last vote, already decided what's gonna happen. And I don't understand how in the world that Tracy Thomas can have any more knowledge than Heather. That is, that's unfathomable. Again, we are at the mercy of a team, a group of three people that are gonna change the course of Holy Beach. And there's really, I can't miss their devotion. But then at the end, it would be three to two. They've disputed there, and we both know that we don't need a second, seventh, no, second, third. We had one back prior to 2015, and it was, it just didn't work. It was unnecessary. And what we're doing now is working. We're moving forward. And what this team wants is to be in control. So again, there's been a motion in the second, and all we can do is sit back and watch these three people change the course of Holy Beach.
All right, any commissioner want to speak?
I just want to say that I see the position as a cooperative position, working with Heather, not against Heather or against any of the other commissioners. Any commissioner, I don't have the, the executive secretary doesn't have the right to not put something on the agenda. It just has to make, ensure that everything is complete. And that's what we've been seeing, hasn't been happening, from being on the other side of it. And yes, we are making change because that's what we were elected to do.
Any other commissioner want to speak? All right, all in favor?
Can I ask another question?
Dr. Dyer, you have the floor.
The town charter states that the current staff is directed by the manager to town manager. So is this a violation of town charter to have a commissioner direct the staff's position? Well, the attorney's not here, so we can't answer that.
And I'm not directing Heather. I'm just working with Heather. Like I said, it's a collaborative effort.
It doesn't sound like it.
We don't have legal opinion on that, so...
We need to wait. We have legal representation.
Okay, we can call the question if we need to.
All right, I'll call the question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed, say no.
No.
Three to one, Madam Clerk. Motion carries. Thomas and Parfus, you have the floor. Next item.
It's in the cover sheet.
Okay, the cover sheet. I make a motion to accept the agenda topic cover sheet as is.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. I have a technical question. As I look at this, who is the town administrator?
I would say that's David.
I'll update it to manage you. That's just a...
Well, our form of government doesn't have an administrator.
Okay.
Needs to be added to.
But I would just simply say, I don't know who prepared this document. Who prepared this document?
I did.
Okay.
Based on other cover sheets in the local area that use them, Brunswick County, Chalote, they all use cover sheets.
But you do understand that we, that's not the form of government that we have.
Yes, I understand. It's a typo. Heather will correct it. Do you want me to, do you want me to change my motion?
No, ma'am. I'm, who's gonna correct it? She'll correct it.
She just, she just said she would correct it.
I don't think anybody's disputing that she's gonna correct it.
Okay.
All right, you guys have the floor. You want to speak to it or...
I think it's, it helps with public participation. It's an executive summary, one-page summary of the agenda item. It can also be used as a checklist to show that everything that needs to be presented is included and presented. It provides a lot of advantages to summarize more complex topics. I think it's a great idea that we should adopt.
Anybody else want the floor?
I just want to say, reiterate that this is something that a lot of places use, and I think it will help with getting things on the agenda. What's the purpose? You know, if they have to answer the questions, it helps us understand.
I have a question for the group. Has anybody done a cost analysis of how much this is gonna cost the town to follow through with being able to correctly answer all these yes and nos? The reason I'm asking that question is because when you take town staff or town attorneys or other professional people, their time, some will bill the town, such as the town attorney, or staff time, that's money. And if all these questions have to be totally reviewed and adhered to and correctly found the right answers to the question, and before this document can move forward, that's a lot of expense and a lot of time. But I'm just wondering if anybody had thought about that.
Sure. I think it'll save time because you get everything settled upfront before you take it to the board, and you're not wasting time in a session like this. So it's really a question of, is, are these things required, yes or no, so that you've got a complete packet that can be acted on when it gets to the board? So I think it'll save money.
All right, any more discussions from commissioners?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I would like to add something. What we're doing here, the cover sheet, I don't really have a problem with. In the past, we have easily had discussions with individual commissioners. And it's something that we've had discussion with individual staff members to come up with what we want to do as far as action items on the agenda. And this is another, just one more step. And the Tommy, Dickie Myers, Tracy Thomas, and Rick Papras trying to take over, what we're trying to do, as we normally do at Holy Beach seamlessly, they're just adding another step to the process.
Any more discussion? Are you through, Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir.
Any more discussion from the commissioners?
I'll reiterate that I've never had a problem getting an item on the agenda. I've never had any issues with there being lack of information. I think this is part of micromanaging the staff at a job that they already do well. That's all I have to say.
All right, any more discussion? Hearing none, I'm gonna call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
No.
Did I, well, I didn't hear any ayes. Say again.
There were three ayes.
There were three ayes?
No.
All right, three to one, Madam Clerk. We're on number, where are we? Number six. Thomas and Parfus, commissioners, you have the floor.
I want to make a motion to accept the proposed meeting schedules written.
I'll second.
Who wants to speak? Commissioners? Yes, sir, Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Our new commissioner, the new commissioners that are just being elected, I don't know what your thinking is. However, you got elected, or supposedly elected, by wanting transparency. And you want to have meetings at 10:00 AM in the morning. Number one, it does not take all day on the second of February to go through the water and sewage part. It does not take all day on the sixth for water and recreation. It does not take all day on the eighth to come through and man his back, honey. Let alone the thirteenth for police and public work. Why cannot we consolidate these meetings? So the ones of us that are retired, city-retired, and have a life that we can meet on maybe, maybe the fifth, sixth of February, even if it takes all day, that's no sense. And the meetings on the seventeenth and the twenty-ninth and a two-week term in meetings? Why can't we have all them on the twenty-ninth? Be reasonable. We cannot, as regular people and being commissioners, submit ourselves to eight, seven and eight meetings a month. That's ridiculous. Come on, we can talk about the water and sewer parts and drag, that's in finance, public work. We can do that in a day. This is not folly or starve. This is Holy Beach. We can get our people, the people that are the directors of these departments, to come in every hour, every other hour, and we can discuss line items one by one. But we don't need this many meetings to make this work. What I am seeing here is you three, again, the team, are doing your dead-levels best to try to keep the mayor, myself, and pay for being able to attend all these meetings, because we have a life. We have obligations. And evidently, your, your appointment at this is to see how many of these that we cannot attend. This is absolutely ridiculous, to the point of, you even have one on the thirtieth, which is the Saturday. I mean, come on, abuse. Come on. We, 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 we as commissioners cannot commission ourselves to this much time. Which I don't mind the time, but we could do it in a day, with what y'all want to do in five days. Come on, guys, I know y'all are a team, and y'all are gonna do what you want to do. And if we continue tonight to see what you do, you're gonna vote to do this, and we're after lunch. We got to do what you say. So there's three of y'all against two of us, and I don't really have a vote device. It really wouldn't make any difference. And you're gonna force us to have meetings? You want to be transparent? How many people at Holy Beach, that own property at Holy Beach, can be at a meeting at 10:00 AM on the fifth and the thirtieth? This is absolutely ridiculous. And I'm to the point that, you know, this team concept and this free agenda and having meetings before the election, having meetings before you're sworn in, and all this just shows that there's something going on here at Holy Beach that I think most of the people, and most people that own property at Holy Beach, would not appreciate.
Commissioners, anybody, commissioners want to speak?
I just want to say that we came up with this schedule in consideration of staff's needs to do it during their working hour versus, hours versus afterwards. And there's not an attempt that we're gonna meet at 10:00 and run all day long. These are gonna be shorter meetings. Again, this is a document that we can revisit and change the schedules on. We may find that it does go quicker, and we will combine them. But we want to get something on the books.
Any more commissioners want to, Mr. Myers?
Yeah, it's a lot of meetings, and most of them are related to the budget. And those of you that know me know I am very, very interested in the budget, and I want to understand it. It's a high priority. I'll dedicate whatever amount of time it takes to do that. I also want to get ahead of the process. I don't want to be in a position where our backs are against the wall. We've got to have the budget message out at the end of May. We've got to have the budget on June 30th. That's what has to be out, is the budget on June 30th. So, and it's laid out by month. There was a lot of thought that went into this, and there's a, there's a sequence where we start off, we talk about current status and understand the current status and where we're gonna be at the end of the year. And then we roll that into the next year in terms of the needs for next year's budget. And then we compile the budget, tweak it, prioritize it, assess it, and then in a position to approve it in advance, not under pressure, but having done our due diligence to go through the budget. So as Rick said, it's a lot easier to delete, cancel meetings that we don't need anymore than it is to try to add a meeting. So we did probably put error on the side of having the meetings we think we might need. If we don't need them, we don't need them. It's a lot easier to cancel. And the goal for tonight is to put these on the calendar so we can plan around them versus having to do a rush special meeting, 48-hour notice type of thing. So we're trying to be proactive. We're trying to plan far out in advance. We're trying to give people time to arrange their schedules. These meetings, the budget meetings have always pretty much happened during the day, except for the public hearing side. So this isn't anything new in terms of these. We are doing what we think it needs to be done. And if we don't need as many, we won't have as many. But we'd rather set aside the time and have everybody be able to plan than to not. And also, I would very much like to look at virtual meetings, recording them. So if you can't be there, you can at least listen in. I'm sure we've got a large number of people listening to this meeting, and you should be able to listen to a recording and catch up, or we'd be glad to help you catch up.
Can I say something?
Sure, Ms. Thomas.
I just want to say that these are supposed to be working meetings. And since we're all three of us new, we really want to take the time to understand what's in the budget, what needs to be in the budget, what's a must-have, what's a nice-to-have. And we've reviewed this with David and Heather, and we are trying to take into consideration that the staff doesn't want to be here on a Friday night at 6:30.
Yes, Dr. Dyer?
So for the two years that I served previously, we had our regular monthly meeting, and we added in one to two budget meetings. They were not on Friday nights at 6:30. We handled all of the business that we needed to. We became, we got the budget out, and fiscally, the town was in great shape, as was reported. So I don't see why we have to have meetings every other day. We can have some of these meetings combined, like we did. In the two years that I served, I did not miss a single budget meeting or a single monthly meeting. So I need to apologize to those 180-some people that voted for me. Unless I shut down my business, I cannot attend a meeting every other day at 10 o'clock in the morning. I feel like I provide an excellent service to this community and the job that I do as a professional and as a commissioner. And I did not miss a single meeting in two years. This, I will not be able to attend all of these meetings unless I quit my job and shut down my business. So I apologize to my voters that supported me. I cannot attend all these meetings.
Any more commissioners want to speak? I want to say a couple opinions.
Yes, sir, I'd like to speak one more time.
Yes, sir.
Again, I think these, these meetings you have in February, one on the second, sixth, eighth, and the thirteenth, should be consolidated into one meeting. I mean, if these commit, these new, the new team of commissioners can get their heads together for one meeting and have it even if it lasts all day, why can't we just have one meeting on the fifteenth? I don't understand why they want to be a... I don't understand why they want to be in the control of both the rest of us commissioners that have a life and, and the staff that works hard to do what Holden Beach needs to have done, to have all these meetings at 10 o'clock in the morning? Now, if you're always laughing, I know, but who else? The, the people that own property at Holden Beach? How many of them have time at 10 o'clock in the morning to listen to a budget meeting? This is absolutely, this, this is another way they are wanting, they, as I say, the team, is wanting to take control of Holden Beach. And if they would have been there the sixty years that I have, they would understand that's not the way we do it at Holden Beach. And that's all I've got to say.
I'm going to speak unless some reason, if somebody has, won't allow me to speak.
You can speak, you just need to turn on the gavel.
There you go. I'm going to tell you, I don't know how long I'm going to be willing just to do that, because we're trying to establish a process that immediately I have not even a chance to say what I want to talk about. I may have wanted to say how wonderful all three of you were, you know. I mean, it's obvious, you just don't want me to do anything. So, so anyway, here's what I want to say about it. I have NCDOT meetings. I have erosion, beach nourishment, all that beach stuff meetings I have to go to. Mayor's meetings, county and state, and all these other fire meetings and health board advisor. I got all these meetings, and not one person, besides the chairman of trustees at the college and, and on all these other boards, not one person has asked me, what is my schedule? Not one. How in God's world am I going to serve the things that the mayor is charged to do whenever this board apparently is going to say, here's whenever we meet? That takes priority over meeting with a congressman or a senator or whatever, the things that I do that y'all don't even know about it. There's no consideration for me. So it's just another way, like Dr. Page said, I'm not going to be, I'm going to miss a lot of meetings. And it obviously doesn't make any difference whether I'm here or not. So, so I too am going to miss a lot of meetings, and I'll be, I'll be across the state or in Washington, or sometimes Louisiana or Florida or whatever, on town business, and you guys just continue to do what you want to do. But I just want you guys to recognize that I recognize that nobody asks me what town meetings or duties that I have to perform and how my schedule as mayor is impacted by what you are dictating here. I think that's very obvious, it's what the intent is, and I'll be quiet, and I'll take my gavel back. Yes, sir. You have the floor.
As everybody knows, we are new here. We have a lot more to learn. The people that have served on the board for years have been through this process multiple times. These are not meetings where we're going to take votes or take action. These are budget sessions where we understand the finances of the town. So, you know, if you're not there, I don't know. We're learning. You already know it. I mean, I don't see this as why we should give up a learning opportunity if there's no real, there's no, no votes are going to be taken. I don't see the requirement that you have to be.
Because me and, myself and the public that cannot attend an appointment, a meeting at 10:00 AM have no input to the budget. Why, why is that acceptable?
Well, the first two sessions, the first rounds of sessions are understanding the existing budget status and where we plan to be this year, and then we move to the next budget. So when the budget, actual developing of the budget, which will be in April, May, we will make sure you can attend those meetings. Those are the ones that...
Well, thank you. I appreciate you making sure I can attend a meeting. What about the public? How many of these people can come at 10 o'clock in the morning? Why, why is the meetings that we had the last two years for budget workshops unacceptable to you guys when it's been acceptable to the public in the previous board?
We intend to give, I intend to make it serious. I intend to have a very good, tight budget this year with lower variances.
That doesn't have anything to do with the schedule of the budget.
All right, let's call the question.
No, I don't want to speak.
All right, Mr. Parfus, you have the floor.
All right. So we've thrown a schedule out here with a frequency of meetings that we would like to see, because we are new. And I understand there are difficulties meeting these requirements for everybody, for many people. Some of these meetings are educational for us. I suggest, you know, I want to put this on the books, but it's not chiseled in stone. So let's look and see if we can find a better time, but I'd still like to keep this cadence. You know, I, I'm open to later meetings. I don't know, you know.
So why are you going to vote and make a motion to accept a schedule that there's obviously some conflict with? Why can't we work together to come to some better meeting schedule?
Take it as a baseline, and then we'll start figuring it out.
It's not going to take it as a baseline if you're voting for it and accepting it today.
But Paige, this thing can be changed. You know, this is going to, this is what we...
So why accept it today? Why can't we work together and come up with a date like all the previous other boards have?
Because we'd like to get the schedule. Yes, sir.
You have the floor.
Uh-huh. We are, I'm open...
So if it's not set in stone, don't vote on it today.
The point of putting out the dates was so people can prepare and plan ahead and...
Three of you together.
But we're all sitting here telling you that this is not a feasible timeframe for the public, the property owners, and some people, the mayor?
These are working meetings for us to learn.
For the three of you to learn.
Review current budget and status. You already know it because you voted on it.
What?
Okay, let's, let's have a little more order, please. One at a time.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what she said.
I said, it's review the current budgets and status. You already should know all this because you voted on the current budget.
And they were public meetings that everybody could have come.
We're, we're not intending to have a whole day meeting. This is just an hour, 10 to 11, 10 to 12.
It doesn't matter how long the meeting is. You want a 10 o'clock in the morning meeting every other day of the month? The general public that works cannot make...
I'm sorry. I was, I think I had the floor. Go ahead. Never mind.
Mr. Mayor, can I speak?
Yes, sir. You have the floor.
Okay, I think Ms. Thomas, which is part of the team, made a valid call.
Don't, don't be so personal, Mrs. Smith.
We can do all of this work in one hour. Then why do we need to take four days to do what we can do in one hour? Why can't we schedule one day and work four hours and cover four different departments? What they are trying to do is absolutely control the agenda of the meeting, because they know good and well that the public, the public of Holden Beach and the commissioners of Holden Beach have a life and a job, and city retired and retired can't be there in everyone. Why can't we, instead of voting on these dates, why can't we table these dates? Because they're going to spend most of February learning how to really be a commissioner instead of being a team. Maybe they need to rethink how they think. So why don't we wait and table this until next month? Or even until the, the regular January meeting, and then decide on some dates that make sense to all of us instead of catering to them? If they, if they could get it done as crazy as that in an hour, then why in the world can't we do four departments in four hours? Okay, again, I'm going to stop.
Mr. Parfus, you have the floor. All right. Mr. Parfus has the floor. Mr. Parfus has the floor.
Clearly, we're not going to solve this tonight. Lot of, and that's...
We can't vote on it tonight.
Excuse me, sir. We haven't voted yet.
Okay.
What I would like to...
One.
Can I speak, please?
Yes, sir.
So obviously, this is a problem. As I said, we're not going to solve it tonight. I would like to see if we can come up with some kind of schedule that works so, to where there can be more participation. If it moves to the evening, I personally am okay with that. So what I'll do is withdraw that motion to approve the schedule. Is that, is that correct, Mr. Mayor? Is that the way we do it? All right. Now, now, I would like a motion, however, to get a meeting scheduled together by the next regular commissioners' meeting.
Who made the second? Ms. Thomas, she made the second? Are you in agreement?
Sure.
Just to make sure I'm covering myself, Madam Clerk, that's allowable, yes?
Yes, sir.
All right. Mr. Parfus, you have the floor again, for whatever kind of motion you want to make.
My motion would be to get the schedules coordinated by the next regular BOC. On that topic, Heather, you got that? I, I know I'm very flexible. I understand the problems for Commissioner Dyer. We, we are serious about the budget and having some rigor in it. We are not, we haven't gone through this process, so it just may take longer for the new kids. But I think we need to work on getting, we need to work on this schedule. I originally hoped we could propose this and then deviate from it, but apparently that's not workable, so my motion is to kick it to the 23rd.
We need a second.
A second.
Discussion, anybody? I would like to add that several of these meetings that I am required to go to, the schedule for '24 hasn't been set yet. So some will be determined by the next regular meeting, and some won't. But I understand and appreciate what you're trying to do, but that's all I'm going to say. So we have a...
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add a comment.
Don't let it be personal.
I would like, I would like to thank the, the three other commissioners for their consideration, but you know, Dr. Dyer and myself have obligations, and, and we have, we, I have. I really appreciate them taking that in consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Read the vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Both say no. It's unanimous, Madam Clerk. Unless I'm mistaken, does that conclude our...
No, sir.
We got Block Q. I thought we were about to run out of time. All right. Block Q.
I'd like to make a...
Commissioner Thomas and Parfus, you have the floor.
I'd like to make a motion to instruct the town manager and mayor Holden to not sign the contract to enter into any agreement with Wells Brothers Construction Company Incorporated or any supplier related to Block Q project.
Second.
All right, commissioners, who wants to speak?
I'd like to speak, please.
Mr. Parfus, you have the floor.
I'm, I previously expressed concern about the amount of real estate that was being used in the Block Q construction drawings for stormwater filtration facilities or features. And it's, we have so much of that because impervious concrete, or excuse me, impervious asphalt or impervious paving of some type is called out for in the drawings. If you look at those drawings, which are in your package, you'll see what I'm talking about. I don't know that that's been out for the public review before. So I didn't get it, get a copy of them until just before the November meeting. Looking at the drawings, it looks like about 10 to 11 percent of the total site, which is more than just the purchased properties, are getting used for stormwater features, and I was concerned about that. If you eyeball it, you can see that those features roughly equate to 40 parking spaces. This matters because, at least according to former Commissioner Kwiatowski, Block Q was not bought for boat trailer parking necessarily, but was bought, not that it's not going to be used for that, so don't shoot, but it was bought because we are involved with an Army Corps of Engineers storm damage reduction study, which dictates how much parking we have to have, and it could be quite a bit. So it was purchased such that we had some real estate to use for that if the requirement emerges. The town is currently spending money on that project. So anyway, I was concerned about this, all right? At, at the November meeting, I brought it up. I said I was concerned. I requested to meet with the architect, the two incumbent commissioners, to talk about how we got to this, okay? Unfortunately, there was no interest in having that meeting. So what I did is I started doing research...
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Yes.
Then with who?
I didn't meet with anybody at that point. I'd requested it.
To meet with the architect and who?
And you and Mr. Smith.
I never received that request.
I made it at the meeting. Perhaps you weren't there. Anyway, just, you know, let's, let's, let me go on, please. You know, so I did some research to see what we were talking. I believe Mr. Murdock said you can use gravel, you can use pavement. The state requires, says it's all impervious, and, you know, the stormwater feature is going to be there. And it is true for gravel if you're working with crush and run. So I looked up the North Carolina Administrative Code on Stormwater Management, and I found that pervious pavement are in fact allowed, okay? And so we might be able to regain that real estate. I also contacted NCDQ, which I do believe is within my purview as a commissioner, and discussed whether or not it was an option. And the gentleman that I talked to, and there's a summary of that conversation in the meeting packet, says, yes, it could be an option. It does have to be engineered, and it does cost more than standard pavement. So also of note is this guy told me that in the NCDQ Stormwater Management Manual, there's also a design to have pervious gravel. So doing some rough calculations, we're talking about 8,000 square feet of, of real estate here. That could be a bigger dog park, that, a little small for a museum, I suppose, but I think it's well worth looking at. Could it cost more? Yes. But you're not going to spend the money on doing the site work to put in the stormwater features. There's a bunch of transformers down at the other end that are going to need to be moved if we go with the current plan. I didn't see where the contractor was responsible for paying for that in the construction documents. He's responsible for coordinating it. And I don't know where those things would go, and some of them may be abandoned. So that's prime real estate down there, and I'll do something with. I think there's justification to go evaluate permeable pavements to see if we can maximize, use it for a lot of things. There's been discussion of moving a pavilion there. There...
The general public cannot use it for a background.
Well, here's one of the, here's one of the...
Hold on a minute. We, we can't entertain comments from the audience. Questions is all up here now, I'm sorry. We have to adhere specifically to the rule. We have to adhere specifically to the rule.
Thank you, sir, I should have not responded. So, this goes back to having a proper master plan and why that property was bought. I don't think we have a proper master plan, I believe Christie's application for the bathroom grant is closer to a master plan than what I've seen, but that's aside. We need to look at this so we can keep as much of that real estate, for whatever purpose it's gonna be, forty parking spaces, twenty boat parking spaces. Me personally, I'm not a fan of the plan because there's so much car parking around the perimeter versus boat parking. I don't know why that decision was made, I wasn't afforded the chance to have that discussion, but I intend to have that discussion. That's all I've got.
Can I say something?
Yes, sir.
I just wanna say that I think we really need to reevaluate, that's a really great piece of land, and we need to reevaluate what it can be used for. So, I think it wasn't properly, it, it could be better utilized than the, than the plan currently has on it.
Mr. Myers?
Yeah, I also, I mean, I've, we've all spoken before, I have significant concerns about the project, about the contract. One of the big concerns is basically there has been no public input on this, and there's a lot of things that are not clear. I am very concerned about reducing the number of boat parking spaces. Right now, today, we can fit more than thirty boat trailers around those parcels. The number, if we go forward with this, gets cut to fifteen, which is less than half. So, I am concerned about cutting boat parking at that location. Also share the concern, amount of asphalt that's being laid and the amount of water retention that's gonna need to occur because of that asphalt. Block Q is a very valuable piece of property, it's in the heart of the island, it's got a lot of potential, it can provide a lot of amenities to the residents. One of the notes I took while people were talking was museum, I didn't have that one down before. We do need to do something with the pavilion, fantastic opportunity to get it away from that sewer system, put it in a place with a grassy area where people can bring lawn chairs and sit in grass versus sitting in a parking lot. So, I think there's a lot of opportunity. I don't think using it for parking is the best use of that property, and yes, I think we should put it on pause, get the public input that's been lacking in this process, and then revisit the plan and make it what we want it to be.
Thank you. Any other commissioners wanna speak?
Yes, sir, I'd like to speak, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Dr. Dyer beat you, hold on a minute. She's yelling to you, Mr. Smith, you've got the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Number one, I, I, I keep hearing Mr. Myers talk about how valuable that property is, and just a few years ago, he told us how ludicrous we were purchasing that property. Number two, he has concern about the parking. You don't, he does not, anybody that does not have kids or people that like the fish don't understand the importance of having a place to park your boat and a trailer, and that is valuable to the tourism of Holden Beach. Not everybody has a, has a, a home on the canal. Even Mr. Myers, who's on the oceanfront, he sold his boat.
I wish.
He can't put it in the water he wants to because he doesn't have a place to park his boat. So, it is very evident that they don't understand that aspect of Block Q. Number two, Block Q is again, as he said, an asset to Holden Beach. We need to have a green space and a place to possibly and probably relocate the gazebo that lets us have our proper consequences. Again, Block Q is an important part of the community, and if he would look at the letters from the fishermen and from the merchants association that really understand that people that have kids and people that have boats and people that like the fish, just like the beer, you know, it's not all about us, it's about what makes us Holden Beach. And Holden Beach is a wonderful destination if you have stuff to do. But if you wanna change all this and not let, have a restroom that are ADA compatible, I mean, come on, y'all. We need to move forward on this, we need to move forward on it now. If not, it'll be another season, it'll be nothing but a grassy field. So, think about this, and, and think about what I'm saying, think about what myself, Paige, and the people that have looked at this for years have wanted to do, and now we have the team that wants to change it all. That's it.
Dr. Dyer?
I disagree with the statement that Block Q was not purchased for boat parking. We'd have to pull the minutes from the meeting, but Commissioner Murdock at the time stated that one of the reasons for purchasing Block Q was to provide boat trailer parking. And it was mentioned several times in the couple of years of doing the planning that we wanted to get that open immediate for the people to use for boat parking. And as, as the, the plan progressed, we found out that, you know, with the ADA compliant bathrooms, some possible green spaces, that we would do this in phases. We budgeted for the paved parking, we did the engineering studies for the parking, the stormwater, we did the stormwater management investigations per se. It's been mentioned that we're decreasing the amount of boat trailer parking, we're not decreasing it, we're making it more manageable for larger boats where the paved areas, so people with large boats that use it for charter fishing, things like that, it's easier to have pull-through parking with those larger boats. We're still gonna have parallel parking around the sides, people can still use that for boats. And if you wanna look right now, the way our paved parking program is set up, people with boats and trailers are paying twice as much as a car. So, if you look at the revenue that's been brought in from paved parking for two years, you have to take into consideration that a boat is paying twice as much as a car, 'cause you have to have a trailer. And if you have somebody that's pulling more than one boat, let's say a charter fisherman or somebody that's providing recreational use, they might have to bring a boat, pay to have that trailer parked, go get another boat, bring that, and they're paying for three. So, the decreased amount of revenue we'll lose from that, not to mention, we're gonna scrap a plan that's cost thousands and thousands of dollars to make and start over. How much is that gonna cost the town?
Commissioner?
Yep, Mr. Myers? I'll restate it, I guess I, I'm not saying it clearly. Right now, if we do nothing, we can have more than thirty boat trailers parked around that property. These plans, as they exist, as they went out the contract, cut that number to only fifteen boat trailers. We can say what we want, but the plans are in the packet, that's what was bid, that's what the contract is gonna deliver, that's what we're gonna get. So, we will be dramatically reducing the amount of boat trailer parking that's around the, that's available on that property.
That is correct.
Mr. Parfus?
I'm done.
You're done? Ms. Thomas?
I'm good.
A little bit?
No, good.
Mr. Mayor, can I make one more comment?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Myers is correct, but the size of the boat matters. Mr. Myers, people don't have little boats and little trucks, they have big boats and big trucks. So, what you're saying really doesn't make sense. And before I end this, I wanna say one thing before we go to adjournment, that I hope the people of Holden Beach understand that there are three of you, Tom Myers...
Keep it, no, no personal.
That are changing...
Mr. Smith, Mr. Smith, it can't be personal, please. You gotta shut him down.
And when it comes down to it, when they say, oh, no, I'm gonna say, I told you so, and that's it.
Any one of you commissioners want to speak?
Call the question.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close, say no.
No.
Three to one.
Three, one, there we go, same old crap.
Is there a motion we adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Yeah, let the adjourn this man, yeah.
Hey, Mr. Smith, calm down. We're adjourned. Dr. Smith seconded it.